Tom McDermond.
Here.
Borough Engineer Kevin Brett.
Here.
Borough Manager Roy Collins. Assistant to the Borough Manager Cheryl Blart, here. Police Chief Chad King.
Here.
Fire Chief Ray Costain. South Bridge BMS, Dan Miller.
Mr. Maglins, here from the fire.
Hi, this is Joe Estes. 1299 Block Run Road. We're here to ask which one of the park has turned into a landfill. I understand for a year or a couple months before long. So, a couple things. You are applying for permits to have the park be done and we're awaiting the permits to be approved and then we're going to do the whole park at one time because that area where the block park is is being designated for flood mitigation. So, we're kind of, we started doing some cleanup and we're just going to do it all at one time. We are aware that it has to be taken care of, so in my opinion, we're trying to get some foot in there to do the running. It's time to do that cleanup.
Put your home stuff in.
Home stuff? I don't think so.
Let me show you pictures.
Are you single?
Like last week?
Yeah, that way.
What, did they bring a house or something?
Please, definitely.
I was not worried about that.
It's been going on for a couple weeks. We'll check on the remainder of the landfill, what's happening.
The last time I was here, we talked about turning important open areas left in the community with parking and I never got very response on a couple of questions to ask. What happens when you put a sizable parking lot in the middle of the community is what happened when we turned the, that parking lot next to Birds, we couldn't change the extension extension into a parking area. To do that, they moved, the county was a favor to us. They had to move two doctor's offices and five homes. And at the time it was happening, obviously, the people were upset and were following to that part of that. But after it was done, they were happy and they ran into a giant deal because of the money that they got for the property. And I think back then, I don't know about now, but the county was obligated to find the people other similar homes in perhaps different neighborhoods and they were very happy about those lots. The same thing I'm concerned about now is, as we all know by now, the taxes, taxes pay up people in Bridgeville 50% higher than their average annual wages compared to the other communities primarily because our, we have no adequate business district. And what I'm concerned about is the property, and I referred to this last month, the property next to the Drión building and the Harmon building on Station Street, the quarter with the First Commonwealth Bank, is the only vacant large section of land in our central business district. And I'm urging you guys to recognize the threat that this is to the future of the community. This, this piece of land, by the way, was purchased within the last month. There's the Drión building, there's the Arco building, this, that whole former abandoned strip of the area is purchased by people that own the Arco building. And from what I've, I've been told by someone who claims they intend to put a, a building occupying the entire space, and this is just a smaller drawing. If they, if a building is occupying the entire space, considering that the legislate, the building code legislation in Bridgeville is that if it's, if a building's constructed in the central business district, the builder doesn't have to provide any parking spaces, we've had it. I mean, I really mean to say it's, in terms of the experts that you know, I talk to from time to time, the community will never be able to account for that. I'm asking you and the parking authority to get together on this. Sadly, part day, I talked to Mike a couple times and he said that they are making an attempt, but they are considering that purchase and they're also, they're all, you know, the piece of land directly across the street from the post office that the doctor purchased and he was going to build a four-story building there, which would require, again, authority for our parking studies, which was a room, the one parking lot. They're making an attempt to negotiate a repurchase there. But, but the key to it is despite the parking authority's efforts to do that, the legislation, the building code that allows builders to not provide parking in the central business district, I think it's a matter of legislation that you guys have to pass in cooperation with them. I just urge you, this is really an urgent situation, I urge you to recognize that and act before the next meeting, before they start calling the building. Absolutely. I can't think of anything. Oh, one other thing, I'm sure. This is the area, if you're on Washington Avenue, you're looking at the Drión building here and the Arco building here, if you, if the borough or the parking authority can purchase that lot, it's not impossible to trade another 24 parking lot above it level across the street from the Strass and the Sarber's or these types of things, you would connect, you would create opportunities for a lot of new retail stores, offices to be built.
What about the building with sports courts and parking underneath?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
When you had a building, the builder building and you put parking underneath?
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's, that's.
They give you tax money from that building.
Right. Anything that you picked up from the parking authority, which I'm sure they bought too.
They really just have to, Bob, broke it down.
Yes, sure.
Are they, where did you hear they're planning on building the building?
I don't know.
They're not trying to like.
No, no, you know what, I don't want to tell you. I, I want to tell you, but I was told this last week by someone who knows for sure. I just don't want to.
That's fine.
There was always said, well, that there's a store that goes through the middle of that that you can't build on top, you can't build a building on top of that area because there's a store that goes.
I remember, I helped Kowski get that land, Miss Harber's, I remember, I think he only paid $40,000, $50,000 dollars worth and then he had to pay $75,000 to build a large sewage thing down the middle. But I don't know if you can't build a, sometimes.
They put that store in when they did, when they closed the bridge off.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, let's not assume that they can't build a, because the under recycle sergeant intended to do just that. And like, I know the Drións have never seen any of this, they have no idea that their income from that building doubled, tripled, and of course, they're going to sell, they don't want to sell their property to the borough. But we aren't taking the property, we're buying it from 15% more than whatever any of these lots are worth.
Thanks, Bob. Dale Livingston.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I come to you, I come before you, representing Bridgeville Greater Area Alliance Club. We're having our third annual pasta dinner, which is Thursday, October 3rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's going to be held at the Alpine Club out in South Bayak. Pasta, meatball, salad. I have tickets if anybody's interested. They're $12 in advance, $14 at the door. And we'd love to see as many of you as supporting what we do. In the past year, we provided $2,000 in flood relief to the fund. We wrote, Bridgeville Greater Area Alliance Club wrote a $10,000 grant for flood restoration, which was put to buildings, residential buildings on Block 21 and Baldwin Street, so, plus service hours. The Bridgeville Greater Area Alliance Club has spent a lot of service projects in the area, so we appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. Good job. And Pat, please.
Don't have so much, but. I'm going to invoke the name of William Calusi and ask the question of the borough, when was the last time that the Public Works Department cleaned the Block 21? I mean, I know it was cleaned after the June 20th, 2018 flood. It was cleaned well at that point. I don't know how much it needs to be cleaned right now, but I know that, I know that Billy Calusi repeatedly brought it up and it took many, many years for him to finally get the Public Works Department to clean out great. So, I'm bringing it up because he has passed on to just remind everyone that it is done. I don't know, is it on any list?
I'll check. I'm not sure, I haven't seen the Public Works list and see what they've done.
They were, they were in it last week.
I can tell you that after every rain event, they do inspect all the cracks and pull out any trees or overhanging fallen in. They just pulled out a 16-foot long tree last week and cut it up. So, they are being.
Very good. Last week.
So, they're going in. How, how are they pulling now or are they?
I'm not part of Public Works Department.
Probably was a backhoe.
That's what I was just trying to figure out is.
Yeah, they, the guys go down and take care of whatever they did with the 16-foot long. I don't know how wide it was or round it was. All I know is that they took time and they cleaned that up and they cut it up and let it out.
Beats of strength.
Now, that's, that's important. The other, the other question is, where do we stand, if at all, with the back channel of Chargers Creek? We're at the confluence with Block 21. Where do we?
As far as what, cleaning out?
As far as cleaning up the sedimentation.
It's a cat's script.
It is part of the break we just sent in and we are gathering information from the court because they did study that, we got that late last week.
So, when do we think we're going to get something back on?
It'll take a permit, we're going to ask the going under the public board.
So, maybe spring of next year?
Probably.
That's what I'm hearing. Government moves at a glacial pace, public moves with great force.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Along to the regular meeting. Motion to Borough Council to approve the minutes of August 12th, 2019, regular meeting as submitted.
So moved.
Bruce Calorici and Virginia Schneider, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to Borough Council to approve the September 2019 buildings.
All move.
Joe Rucci.
Second.
And Nina Patichelli, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to Borough Council to approve the September 13th, 2027, and October, excuse me, October 4th and 11th payrolls.
So moved.
Bruce Calorici.
I'll second.
And Bill Henderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to Borough Council regarding ordinance number 1011, amending the borough's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 7, Fire Prevention and Fire Protection, adding Part 6, Emergency Services, Cost Recovery, to authorize and establish rules and fees associated with recovery of emergency services costs incurred by emergency service provider.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Bill Henderson and Virginia Schneider, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. A motion to Borough Council regarding Resolution Number 2019-09, accepting the municipal winter traffic services agreement between the Borough of Bridgeville and the Penn Dock for the inner seasons of 2019 to 2020, 2020 to 2021, 2021 to 2022, 2022 to 2023, and 2023 to 2024. Agreement includes adjustments to offset severe winter storms equal to a percentage of the department's actual costs, similar for road services, over and above the five-year average. The agreement may terminate prior to September 15th for any year of agreement is in effect.
All move.
Any questions?
I'll second.
Joe Rucci, second. And Bill Henderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. A motion to Borough Council regarding the receipt of the minimal municipal obligation worksheet for the police pension, pension plan for budget year 2020 as prepared by Manager Collins.
So moved.
Bill Henderson.
Second.
And Joe Cosmo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to Borough Council, motion to Borough Council regarding the receipt of the minimal municipal obligation worksheet for non-uniformed employees' pension plan for budget year 2020 as prepared by Manager Collins.
So moved.
Bruce Calorici.
Second.
And second by Nina Patichelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. A motion to Borough Council regarding the bid for 416 Darby Way environmental assessment. Mark's student proposal was received with the following results. Consultant AGX Incorporated for the bid base amount of $950 and Vols Environmental Services Incorporated in the amount of $1,900. Anyone look for?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, just one more. So, move to accept AGX for $950. Bruce Calorici.
Second.
And Joe Cosmo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay. A motion to Borough Council regarding the bid for Block 21 Park ADA restroom renovations as bid by Char West Cobb. If the borough chooses to award this project, it is imperative that your motion include the following language. Motion to award contingent upon CDVG grant funds being confirmed by all gain kind as received from the HUD. Sealed bids were open in the Char West Cobb offices on Thursday, August 29th, 2019 with the following bid results. Select Contracting LLC, the base bid amount of $57,762. Add the alternate number one amount of $10,000. Contractor Newman Plumbing Incorporated, the base bid amount of $68,296, with an add alternate number one amount of $7,850. And JLD Construction LLC, base bid amount of $89,000. And add ultimate number one amount of $13,900. CDVG here, 45, 7.2 estimate grant funds for the project total of $34,000. Amount would be paid out of the general, the balance of the amount would be paid out of the general fund. Is there a discussion?
Mr. Chairman, the.
Good, good, good. Looking over the bids, a lot of the cost of your items were like painting, painting inside the building and outside the building. And it seemed a little bit high. I was thinking our guys could do it, but I don't know if we're allowed to do that. Somebody that I know, I live with, told me that back in the day when they used to bid on stuff, they would put it out for bid one, two or three times and borough people were committed to do it. I don't know if that's, that was a long time ago, but you ever hear anything like that?
Yeah, you can, you can remove items. I don't know because it was bid through the call, then you could do a change order, deduct it, we have to ask. The call could, because it would be about $6,000.
What's that?
Would be about $6,000 of a deduct. So, it's, it's over 10% of what you would, would be. The add alternate was some painting on the outside and raptors on the ceiling, plus a little bit of ceiling work as well. But there was painting in the interior that we were going so much disturbance on the interior, so we got to check with them.
We're not in the big shape to hurry you to do the work, but I don't want to lose a grand either, so I think that's.
Oh, wait, Dan, you're losing a grand?
Well, it sounds like they would like to see you do the award, but they don't actually have the money, so they want you to put that contingency in there.
The money doesn't show up to the government.
Then they wouldn't let us do the contract anyway, so. I mean, you could award a contingent on deducting items four and five and then I could call that tomorrow and check.
I'll wait. Okay. All right. Motion by Bruce and second by Virginia. Want my contingency?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Next question is, is there an issue with that if that would change below bid?
It would not change. Okay. 57, 68, 95, yeah, it would not change a little bit. It gets closer.
A motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept and pay commissions due August 2019, real estate tax collector report.
All move.
Joe Rucci.
Second.
And Bruce Calorici, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the July 2019 financial report.
All move.
Joe Rucci.
Second.
Nina Patichelli, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And motion to accept the August 2019 police report.
So moved.
Who's that, Bill?
Bill.
And Bruce Calorici, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And motion to accept the August 2019 police report.
So moved.
Who's that, Bill?
Bill.
And Bruce Calorici, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And motion to accept the August 2019 police report.
So moved.
Who's that, Bill?
Bill.
And Bruce Calorici, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the July 2019 financial report.
All move.
Joe Rucci.
Second.
Nina Patichelli, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the July 2019 financial report.
All move.
Joe Rucci.
Second.
Nina Patichelli, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And motion to accept the August 2019 police report.
So moved.
Who's that, Bill?
Bill.
And Bruce Calorici, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Yes.
Haven't got three more.
Three resolutions for the change.
Oh, I was going to bring it up during the.
You did prove it.
Yeah. I was going to do it during the report. Gotcha. I didn't forget about it.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Many reports, administration.
I don't have any reports.
Finance, administration.
Nothing really to report other than taxes are due and when is the discount? Discount was in August, so now you're, it's paid already, so please send in your taxes as soon as possible so you don't get hit with any of the late charges. That's all I have for that.
Thanks. Parks and Rec.
Okay. Aside from that, not really, I guess pick the season, start the one. The other parks are pretty in shape, whatever it goes. I got something from Cobb, which you guys got. This thing came up pretty quick, there was a gravel with some sidewalk work, curb, handicap insurance, or anything, and I leave our engineer, and I know Bill bought it, and I can check these things out, and we submitted, submitted application for a grant for $38,000. And it's accessible handicap accessible ramps at Murray Avenue, Shady Avenue, Chest Street, Station Street to create an accessible route for handicapped pedestrians. Current ramps may be difficult or dangerous for handicapped pedestrians to traverse. So, hopefully, if you can pick up this stuff in 3 months, that's all I got.
Great, thanks, Joe. Public safety, Bill Henderson.
We skipped over Nina, I want to know that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Nina.
It's okay.
I had my notes, my notes ran into public place.
You got my, you got everything on my pack, but I notice here, what, I don't notice, I know, the creek has been cleaned right after the, the rain we have, cleaned all the debris, et cetera, et cetera. The maintenance was done, also, it was a, the maintenance was done, we removed some trees out of the park, they fell to the wind and everything. So, some of the things we mentioned from the public and from Pat, so partially that it's done already, Pat, but I'll look at it tomorrow in more detail.
Thanks, Nina. Bill, Paul's.
Mike, we're continuing to work on some of the parking issues with the committee and solicitor down on St. Clair Street, we've been talking about exploring opportunities to help alleviate some of that issue that we have. One other thing I wanted to mention, I attended one of the Bridgeville Preparedness Planning meetings with Dale Livingston and his group that he's assembled with places of worship and other groups within the community, and it was really, really interesting to attend. And I wanted to thank Dale and all those folks that are getting together to talk about being ready for that next event. And so, they're very proactive and there's a lot of good conversation about being ready for that next, you know, hopefully it never comes, right? But in the event that it does, I think we've been good people, spirit in that group and I look forward to continuing to work with them. Last thing I want to do is thank the police and the fire department for showing up at the Chestnut Street Block Party. Always a good, you know, example of what they do for the community there and we appreciate it you guys being there.
You know they didn't show up at the same time. The police waited until the firemen got out of the way and they talked about you last night. We didn't want to make them over that.
Mayor, Betty.
Welcome back. How was your turn to the park?
It was a great celebration, Mike, great grand old story. August was a busy month. I attended the 125th celebration for Trinity. Prior to going, I sent a letter of congratulations to the mayor. She met me in front of the historical society building on the day of the actual celebration and the BMS conversation. August 28th, attended the breakfast for Celebrate and Share. It's a group that recognizes the achievements of women while also celebrating the 99th anniversary this year of the 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote. This year, they gave the 19th Spirit Award to State Senator Pamela Iavino. Also, I presented a proclamation to Boy Scout Team 2, to John Self, who beautified the gardens at Our Lady of Grace Church for his last Eagle Scout project. That's it.
Thank you, Matt, Mayor. Police Chief.
No report, Council President.
Perfect. Means nothing happened.
What's happening?
Tell us.
Solicitor.
Thank you, I'm going to have my regular report. Anything in public interest, I'd like to thank Chief Costain for helping with finalizing that raid first, and all those that rescheduled and, and actually, Mike and I are talking this weekend, they want to have us take a look at updating the fossil and a couple of the other parts.
Borough Engineer, that.
Yes, we did the cement report dated today. Road program, we're going to have a quick construction meeting to get that kicked off. I mean, the road program completed, the different projects, we submitted permits on roadway access, some of those planes revised, it changed to where you can drive straight in. There's a log system, it's basically a gate that's reconnected, whenever, it will keep the water in the stream and after the flood event's done, you will, the machine lift them out, set them on the side, they're not real heavy, but they lock together. And then you take those out, you drive in, you clean out the stream and you put it back in, so that during a flood event, those businesses are protected. We also, there's a couple inlets there, we reconfigured that, the plans, and put a backflow, basically for the pipe, so when the stream comes up, water doesn't come out of that catch basin. Water, if it builds up enough, it will push back out into the stream, that's worse than two meters. We don't want water getting, coming up out of that catch basin, flooding that stream and stuff. We think that should be a big help. So, that's ready to go in for a change permit. We're talking to DEP to see if they actually require the change. If it does, we're going to submit that in. Commercial street wall project, we have talked to DEP.
Thank you. You have my great report. Anything in public interest? But I'd like to thank Chief Costine for helping with finalizing that great first in order to reschedule National Mike and I's conference weekend. They want to take a look at updating the fossil, and a couple of the other parts.
Possible. Row engineer.
Yes, we did submit a report dated today. Road program, we're gonna have a quick construction meeting to get that kicked off. I mean, the road program completed. The different projects, we submitted permits on gangway access points, where those planes revised. It changed to where you can drive straight in. There's a log system that's basically a gate that's re-shaped. Whenever, we keep the water in a stream, and after flood events done, when the machine lifts them out, some on the side, they're not real heavy, but they lock together. And then you take those out, you drive in, you clean out the stream, and you put it back in so that during a flood event, those businesses are protected. We also, there's a couple inlets there. We reconfigured that on the plans and put a backflow. Basically, it's for the pipe. So when the stream comes up, water doesn't come out of that catch basin. Water, if it builds up enough, it'll push back out into the stream. But it's worse than two meters. We don't want water getting, coming up out of that catch basin and flooding that street and stuff. We think that should be a big help. So that's ready to go in for a change permit. We're talking to DEP to see if they actually require the change. If it doesn't, we're gonna submit that in. Commercial street wall project, we have talked to DEP about that because we're preparing a conceptual plan for that. They're gonna consider that, we believe, to be a levy once it's built because it's gonna increase the height along the stream. It does require meeting with DEP to go over. So once we get a good concept plan prepared, we'll set up a meeting and we'll go with this, and we'll have that discussion with the department to get that permit started. Maple Street wall, it's been submitted, permits under review. They did call for a few comments on that because of the height of it. They're getting concerned about that. Army Corps, like I indicated earlier, they did submit September second, or we did September second for DISC, so we do have dependents now, and we're reviewing that. The commercial street culverts, we did submit the application for those to be cleaned. So sixty, ninety days, we're gonna have that to clean out. Because they are the ones by a critical, we need a permit to clean that out. Next is the GEDF grant applications. There's three different packages. We put these in. One was Fireville Road Stormwater Complete. That was for ninety-eight thousand two hundred. The minimum grant amount's five hundred when you redo requirements. But in all cases, we were asked by our communities, and they were requested by various people to submit less than five hundred. So this one is less than the five hundred minimal. I don't know how they're gonna react to that. I don't know if they're gonna react positively. I don't know if that's the case or not. So we'll wait and see what they say on that one. The other ones we grouped into the five hundred thousand dollar grant amounts. We called the one McLaughlin Run Flood Mitigation. That was the Janeway ramp, commercial street culvert cleaning, channel cleaning at the, at the end of the stream down where it connects to the back channel, lower end of the wall foot, and the trash rack. Trap rack, this is, we would call this a trash.
Okay.
Spell check. And then the other one was borough by retaining walls. You had three retaining walls. So we put Maple Street, Warner Street, which you've applied for a grant elsewhere also, and then the wall we just talked about that required one oh five. All totals about one point five million. It submits about a million wanting grants. They'd have about four hundred thousand dollar match. If we could just get one of those grants, that would be a great thing, so. And then depending on what may get funded, the next cycle submit again. So that process is ready. I do have those.
The next cycle's in April or?
Yeah, it comes basically once a year. This cycle here was a little bit later, but mostly it's around April. I'm told that these are gonna be awarded come November. Is the timing. That's, that's quick, but they have indicated that's gonna be the case. Next is the CDBG. The request on end for the five ramps as indicated earlier, for thirty-five thousand. Backflow Runner Project, we are preparing contract documents, and bids open on the twenty-sixth for that. That's the second contract you've had on that. You already talked about McLaughlin Rushstream. We did look at that estimate. That's pretty close to what it should have committed. We had it about fifty-six thousand, and it committed fifty-seven. We compared it to, somebody indicated multiple bids. We had two or three other ones. We've had to bid two and three times, and each time we tracked the pricing, taking things in and out. So we have, we have a pretty good track record on these rush stream projects. They all come in higher than what people think it wants to, so that's kind of still a typical story. And the last thing you just looked at, John, was the structure demolition. We'll put those specs together, and that'll be ready for your next meeting. The asbestos takes about two weeks to check, so that's all.
Do you need to do a motion for the new grants?
If you can. For GEDF grants for the three resolutions as indicated.
I'll make a motion to have submitted grants. Applications?
As a rule.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Mr. President, since Kevin talked about streets, I want to ask him later, but that's what I'll ask you now. Something we could do with Bank Street? Would you be able to get in touch with, and on, with Bank Street's badge? I mean, that's, I don't wanna say I was a little boy when they did it, but they did well though. But then, that's time. Then somebody can get on.
We can reach out.
Please take.
I know, I know. I've had to play it safe from several people that be playing by it. One in particular, but yes. Thank you, Kevin. Ray's not here? Mike's here.
Yeah. Good busy month, for the month of October or August, I mean. We had thirty-two total calls, two building fires, twelve medical assists, three motor vehicle accidents, we had a gas leak, and then numbers, little calls from water problems, down power lines, public services, total of thirty-two. We had a, what was that? On. Friday, August twenty-third, another house fire broke out on Union Street. The family lost everything. The fire department, according with the family, so doing a couple fundraisers, wanted to make where there's spaghetti dinner this Sunday from twelve to five at our fire department. The Steeler game will be on, so people come down, have dinner, support the family. All the proceeds go toward the family. Said no excuses, you guys can watch the Steeler game. Sometimes that's an excuse.
This show.
Yeah. And then we're having another one. I'll get further details in time. We're gonna do a comedy show night with them, so it's about all that.
Thank you very much, Mike. Dan's not here. Mary Wies, historical society.
I was gonna try to be brief, but that's. Thank you very much. I hope all of you remember seven o'clock this Wednesday night is the quote anniversary unquote of September eleven, two oh one. It will be held at Saint, well, you can tell I've been here a long time, Holy Child Church at seven o'clock this Wednesday night. I hope to see many of you there. Next item I have to talk about is that Saturday and Sunday, the twenty-first and twenty-second of this month, our American Legion Post fifty-four is celebrating one hundred years of existence. One hundred years since the end of World War One. It's an open house. I don't have the hours, but keep tabs on it. Hope you drop in. Then, the last Tuesday of this month, Historic Society is back to professional educational speakers. This one is at seven thirty, what is that, the twenty-fourth of this month, at the Fire Hall. And it is about presidential elections and the various ways that the president-elect use all the different methods to get his name heard in the public and whatever. So that's the first one. We will have two more before the end of the year. The second one is two days before Halloween, and it is all about the house in Brentwood that is Ghost City, USA. That is another professional talk. I won't attend that one. I'm sorry. Anyway, the very last one is interesting. It's two days before Thanksgiving. And the speaker, I think her father was Mike Abrams. And if so, this is his daughter, Georgine, who has written a book about Pete Calibro and then the two Syrian relatives of hers that were all captured in Germany under the Nazis, and they ended up in the same place, all three of them. So she has written a book, working for the government. She had access to other that we would not have. So her speech, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, I urge you all to attend it. Then, the first Saturday of October, the first Saturday of November, and the first Saturday of December, the Historic Society will be open from twelve till three. We're gonna try it. Hopefully, we'll pick it up again in February. Takes one retired schoolteacher and me, and we're gonna try it. You're all welcome to bring your grandchildren and come see what we have. Then, the last thing I want to mention is. It's been a tough year for everybody, and I've lost some very good friends this year. So, in light of everything going on, I just want to say to all of you, thank you very much for serving this community, and I hope we can get ill people back up on their feet, able to help us, and just want to thank everyone for what is done for the borough of Bridgell. I say thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
We made way from the library.
We started Love Your Library campaign, of course, everybody loves library. September is particular because any donations received that month were eligible for a prorated match for the Jack Munchen Foundation. So if you noticed, right on Bridgell, we've got signs throughout the area, Love Your Library. So that's the campaign going on for the month of September. Then on the twenty-ninth, in conjunction with the firemen, they're having the open house. We're having a lawn party and Family Fun Day over at the library, one to four. I was gonna give you some flyers you could leave at the, so free at your actually for two dollars per person for kids, under four free, and gain that care each for the day for the afternoon, just an open event for the afternoon. That's all from the library.
You should have something, Mary, that same day. You gotta go walking toward.
Well, that's, yeah, with the flyers, because any of the firemen doing something that day as well.
Yeah, firemen, honestly, the firemen stop the local side of the library.
Yes, begin.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Parking, parking authority, plans, commission, anybody? Dale? Anything for a manager report?
She did not submit any.
Old business? New business?
Mr. Chairman, sorry, I want to mention this to ask Kevin. It's, it got to my attention, Kevin, when you're finding me, can take a look. Chestnut Street is a long street. We have only one catch base for the water, okay? We, that goes all with the Bank Street. From Chartier, all with the Bank Street, there isn't any. So I look over there and I wonder whether there's a connection. I can't see any other one. When you have a chance, can you look that? There is one on, almost across the Bank Street, but coming from Chartier is none. So it's a pretty long street, I think.
Reseeding.
Water, water. There's only one. It's stormwater. Stormwater. This is stormwater. It is only one at the end. Nothing up there. Take and look at it.
The one house, the one neighbor that you have that has the problem with the ice in the wintertime from all that water? Tim's mother's home?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, she was talking about that the other night, asking about that. I don't know if you remember.
Could be related to that.
I'm reminding you, it was in front of their house.
I've been approached that, so that's the reason I'm bringing that up. So let's the engineer look at it. You were going over it. I was so. Off the record.
Any other business?
I, I have one more thing. I've had a few people on Greg Street ask about the trees that everybody is concerned about. My main concern is the branches that are pretty long going across the street. And I'd hate for one of those branches to fall in a car. But I think something at least those branches going across needs to be addressed.
Well, since the firemen's here, maybe with a letter, if it's not danger, maybe with the public work, maybe you can take a look at some of those branches. Don't we get the professional people to some of that? What's that? I don't know.
We have to have somebody coming.
Just temporarily.
The ones that are just over the street part?
They're not laying on wires or they can't fall on wires, that's one thing, but they're, they're public works, not certified to.
Crazy wires.
We can see, word out, we can take a look and see what we can and can't do.
Yeah. I mean, legally, you can cause trees in your airspace to be removed at the same time. Just because they're in your airspace, they're not your ultimate responsibility. Obviously, if there's an overriding public safety, you can go clear trees in your airspace. And a lot of folks believe that the trees in front of their house, well, it's interesting if you ask folks at the law on the trees, when they're healthy, folks often believe they're theirs, you're not allowed to touch them, but when they die, they're yours, and they want you to take.
So who do they belong to?
The borough, from my research and talking with board over the last couple of years, and we've had many of these situations, we've never had to shade trees. We've never caused to be planted in our right-of-way tree. So they're not technically the borough's ultimate responsibility. Obviously, public safety is. The point is, is that adjacent landowners or the predecessors who caused those trees to be planted, and even, you know, on Greg Street and all those, if you look at those, they're pretty uniform. They may have been planted by a developer in nineteen. Still, those are the landowners.
But the question is, though, they are dead.
At the same time, if you, well, some of them are living, some of them are not.
Yeah, that's true.
But if you ask ones, Councilman Douchy's, Wellington, ones that are possibly clear in perfect danger, you certainly have the power to go in and cause that to do.
Well, a couple of bricks are really damaging cars really bad, do the top completely.
All of them or some of them? Or we have to have some guidance on.
Guidance?
We talked to Lenny.
I mean, let me have somebody, have, have them walk, have our guy walk the street and see, because I know, sort of towards the end, towards the banks, there's water, it's so obvious. I mean, it's this huge branch, you go straight on at ninety degree, and it comes almost all the way to the other side of the tree. That's it. I know.
I just don't want to see a tree fall on, or a branch fall on.
And it would be a homeowner.
They're not dead, but they are getting.
That, that.
And these storms, we already had large, large, like the last, really, that storm we had, we had the large branches fall down. They're not dead, but they are. So, train you? All right. Motion to adjourn? All those in favor?